I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting on Monday, March 13th at 6:00 PM at the Harvey Hearing Room, Town Hall, Metcalf Square. Patty, can we do a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Ms. Howard, could you lead us to the flag of allegiance, please?
Ours. Flag of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comments this evening? No? Okay. Any delegates and visitors? No. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of February 27th?
Motion.
Twenty-three. Motion by Mr. Lutteiri. Do I have a second?
Yes.
By Ms. Petrie. Can we do a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. Great, moving on to financial and business procedures. Can I have a motion, please, to approve warrant SPW 23-15 in the amount of $314,121.46, please? Motion by Ms. Swope.
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Roll call, please.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. Can I please have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 23-18 in the amount of $910,293.73?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Petrie.
Second.
Second by Ms. Swope. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Upstayed.
Mr. Matucci?
Stayed.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. Can I please get a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 23-19 in the amount of $805,743.35, please?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Swope, I mean by Ms. Petrie. Second by Ms. Leonard. Can I please get a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Upstayed.
Mr. Matucci?
Stayed.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. Doesn't look like we have any budget transfers this evening. Can I get a motion to approve the Winthrop Parents Network CPC grant line account?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion?
Yes, please. What is that?
Sure.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So what it is, it's a program run by Anita Preble, who's one of our counselors over at the ATC. And it's an after-school and sometimes during-school program in regards to where parents assist in the schools, where they run some activities with the kids. They also help us with some, as recess monitors. And so the grant is a very limited grant. It only, it only provides us exactly $45,000 per year. And as you can imagine, the past couple of years, we've needed a little bit more assistance. So a lot of the parents had gotten together and decided to fundraise a few dollars to extend the program because we were down to like our last $6,000, which would have been, by the end of March, would have been pretty much depleted. So this should, this should assist the program to run to hopefully the end of April, mid-May.
Oh, I like that.
So, and just a little bit of extra on that. So the Parent Network services students that, the majority of the students who are not eligible to go to school yet. So we have a number of families who have little ones. Eighteen months, I believe, is the age that children can start attending. And it's during the school day, and we have some retired teachers who meet with groups of parents, grandparents, aunts and uncles that may be raising babies between the ages of eighteen months and three years old, and do groups with them. So reading groups, play groups. They work with families on how to engage children. We've seen a pretty significant uptick in grandparents raising some babies. So it's also a social network for some of these families. It's a good introduction to school for families. I think one of the biggest, aside from the collaboration and support system it puts in place for our community members, the literacy portion of it is huge. So some of our retired teachers do a lot of work with the families on providing them, not only with books to read to children, but they can take the books home, they can borrow from the lending library. Oftentimes, they'll seek out free resources for the parents and grandparents and family members that are caring for children. And it's really a neat program run at a very high level, high-quality level.
I took my grandchildren to do this.
Oh, you did?
I just didn't know what the name was.
It's, it's really a neat program. And, you know, the grant itself, the years has supported the cost. There are a lot, there are costs associated with it in terms of being able to set up the room, buy materials and supplies, especially appropriate age-level play materials for our, for our young kids. And the grant itself doesn't change dramatically year to year, but our needs do. We have seen a greater need, which is, I think, through a lot of the messaging that we've done. We put out a Parent Network flyer that goes to our families. Many families also get to put on our websites, distributed in the community, left at the libraries. So libraries are a great resource for us, where parents parent students all the time. And we were able to house the program within the public school for the last several years. We're running out of space, as, as you all know. And last year, at the end of the school year, the classroom that we were using, we had to turn that into a classroom for third grade. So we couldn't fit them in the building anymore. And you really need to be in a, sort of a central location for families. And so we were able to access the EB Newton. EB Newton's not one of our school buildings, and certainly, you know, they have their own needs in their building in terms of paying for the heat and the electricity and the use of the space. So this year, we have been paying for the use of that space. We are looking real hard to bring it back into a school classroom, even if we have to go a little bit smaller in terms of size. So I don't anticipate this being an ongoing need, but in order for the funds that the family network group has, the parent group, sort of almost like a boosters club, to be honest, if you can kind of line it up with that, we could not put that into the school's budget. So we couldn't create a line item in the school's budget to deposit those fundraising monies that have been, you know, so graciously given by the community. They did a bake sale, and they've done some other cool raffles and such. So this request is to develop a separate line that is specific for this fund of money that has come in, and it will be utilized only for this program. So the money that they've raised will be deposited, and then it will be withdrawn through Anita and the needs of the program.
Great. I think we can do a vote, I think we already approved the motion.
Roll?
Yes, please.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. Can we do, can we do all the buildings and grounds together?
Yes.
Free requests? Great. Can I get a motion to approve the following buildings and grounds request? Parks and Recreation for flag football. Winthrop Gymnastics Academy for gymnastics competition. And Merrimack United FC for Bay State Soccer League.
Motion?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Roll call, please, Patty.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. Great, now on to our reports. Do we have a subcommittee report for curriculum?
Yes, we met on the 27th here in the Harvey Room right before our last meeting. And we discussed reading, and that was Suzanne Leonard's suggestion. And I thought it was a, it was really a great conversation with Lori. We, we talked about the major components of the reading program, which include phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. That's five, actually. But what was, what was kind of fun is we talked about the difference between phonemes and phonetics. Phonemes, the sounds that carry meaning in the word, like the difference between boat and tote, so you know it's different because of the sound you're using. But also phonetics, which is attaching that sound to, to the letter. So you can then begin to understand why it's difficult for students, learning English as a second language, to learn to read first, which is impossible, actually. So it's hard for a reading teacher to sit and wait for the child to learn English, realizing that they're supposed to be teaching them reading and hoping they don't get behind. So I think that's one of the challenges that Lori faces in helping everyone coordinate their work together. But I, I thought that was interesting because it's not something we think a lot about usually. We have, I, we all ask how you choose a reading program. And one of the things that we learned is that DESI decides on some of the best quality programs, and then DESI is willing to fund those quality programs in terms of training. So one of the reasons that we, we select from ones that they have already vetted is that we can also get money for them. So we usually pilot a program, we test it out, and then we try it. So, so that's why it takes so long, too, for us to change programs. It's not like, it's not only just that the teachers have to learn about the programs, but we also want them to choose the best program that we possibly can. Also, we learned that parents of the ELL kids are participating each night or sometimes in the afternoon on an English language learning program. And I just think that's terrific. I think it's terrific we support that. I think it's terrific that the parents have agreed to do it. So that's also a really important component, part of kids learning English, because if they can learn more English at home, and they're not just speaking their native language, that's also a big help. I didn't put this in the minutes, but we did talk about the cost of these programs. And one of the biggest costs is the Renaissance Program. I believe it's the valuation component part of that program, which costs is about $600,000. That's not a small piece of change. But on the, of the reading programs themselves, we, once we decide on a reading program, we don't have to pay for it each year. It's not so different. So there's, every teacher has their own set of, of materials, but they can pay for that once, and they can use that again, over and over and over again. So I was impressed by how well thought out it was. And that was our meeting for an hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, do we have a budget subcommittee report?
Yes. Last Monday, we met Lisa's office. It was myself, Lane, Julie, from the Budget Subcommittee, and also Suzanne Swope, School Committee. Others in attendance were Karen Chavez, Lisa Howard, and all. We talked about the 2024 budget, which reviewed. We'll follow the timeline, and we should be ready for a presentation of the school committee by April 24th.
Thank you. And do we have superintendent's report tonight?
We do. And following up on Mr. Matucci's summary of our meeting, budget planning continues every day, sometimes into the night, working with both the town, the school. And when I say the school, that's all departments, all teachers, all faculty, and certainly our administrative team. This week, as I have done in the past and had to pause during, during COVID, this week I'll be conducting two budget forums with staff, one at the elementary level and one at the secondary level. The purpose of that is to provide them with an update and a forecast of how I foresee the budget based on the information you received from the town manager and what we have been gathering over the past several months, going, starting back as early as late November, in terms of the needs of each individual building, the needs of departments, the needs of athletics, capital planning, and the like. I'm also doing it so that I can gather additional feedback. So we've done staff surveys and parent surveys. We are in the process of putting the results of those surveys together. Specifically, the parent and community survey will be shared publicly on our school's website so that folks can see what, what everyone else thought. And we take that information and value that information that parents share with us as we're building our budget. It's very important information, but this opportunity now will give staff, maybe who filled out that survey and have learned some new things or want to add some additional information, or if they just want to learn about the budget, how is she doing this and with whom, and why is it taking so long? So I think those things are critical. And I also think it's critical for staff to understand that as a key stakeholder in the building of the budget, that their voice is being heard. And that would be reflected in where we're at with the budget right now, coupled with the information that we're continuing to gather from families as well as staff. I'll also be working with the PTO to see if I can embed myself in their next meetings with an invitation for families to attend that meeting and also hear some of the same information that I'm providing back to the staff. You know, how are you feeling? You've done a survey. Are there additional things that you would like to know? Giving them a little bit of an overview of how the budget is put together, although that may be repetitive for some, some folks, based on my initial review of the survey results. Some folks really want to hear that. They're not knowledgeable of that, nor would they be unless they were working here and being dragged into the process by us. So that's exciting to do. So I look forward to the two meetings this week, and then popping into parent-teacher organization meetings at each school. So staffing, a little update on staffing. Let's talk about the Gorman Fort Banks principalship. So we had two final candidates. They visited the Gorman Fort Banks on separate days during that time. They were in classrooms, I think almost, if not every classroom in, in the building. And this was individually, and they were brought around by Danielle Tucker, who was our assistant principal. So they met with staff, they had a parent meeting, they met with administration, some school committee members, they met with myself, front office staff, and they had a full day, 7:30 to, I think, 3:30. So the principals since then, the Principal Search Committee, has completed their work. They have done surveys of the staff in the building, as well as the parents who were at the meetings, collected that data, brought those thoughts back to Ms. Galvin as part of the process. And then Ms. Galvin and I met to review some of those findings. I am completing my final work, which is to go back to the Gorman Fort Banks and speak with the principal, because I think it's important for Ms. Pearson to be able to share with me her vision for the next several years. She has spent 16 years building and being the administrator in that building, setting up programs, working with staff. I do think her, her vision for the future is critical. I'd like to know from her directly how she sees the next leader of that building, what she thinks would be beneficial. So having some of those additional meetings, I already had some. I'll have to conduct some more tomorrow. And I believe I will have a recommendation to myself, which is where it goes, to be able to offer the position to one of the two final candidates. The feedback so far has been excellent. I think we threw people for a little bit of a loop because we have not done such an intense, structured interview process since I've been here. And the reason for that has been good, because we promoted a lot of internal candidates up the ladder to take positions. We've done a version of an interview committee, but nothing as expansive as the one that we have just done. I will say, having a committee with the recommendations of some of our committee members to have a student as part of that interview committee, and I talked about that, I think, last week, was really, really good. And I believe that at the end result, people will be very happy. Once I have made that determination, I will speak with Ms. Pearson first, and then I will let the school committee know. We will also be letting the staff of the Gorman Fort Banks and our families. And that sort of has to be done in a pretty timely manner, as opposed to when you let people know, because if you wait two seconds and it ends up on social media, then people get upset. So I have a pretty, pretty solid plan. So once you hear from me in an email, you can be sure that the next step of notifying families in the school personnel will be, will be done within probably 30 seconds after your email is sent. So we're excited about that prospect. Some individual school updates. The Gorman Fort Banks students enjoying Literacy Night this week, Friday, in celebration of Read Across America with pajamas as the evening attire. Students enjoyed a book read by Ms. Pearson, followed by music featuring performer Peter Alexandra. A book swap enabled all students to leave the event with a gently-used book, and students were invited to make bookmarks while they were there as well. This is just one of the many successful and fun PTO-sponsored events at the Gorman Fort Banks. You'll see it in my newsletter that's coming out. We have some great pictures. I think there was already some stuff on social media, from what I hear. Also at the Gorman Fort Banks, the Samaritans will be offering a one-hour workshop that's going to be open to all guardians. And parents aim to teach strategies to best support children during stressful times. It is de-stigmatizing suicide and mental illness in the community and providing, they'll also be providing helpful resources. There will be a link that's being sent to parents of folks at the, students at the Gorman Fort Banks, and this will be taking place Thursday, March 16th, at 6:30 PM. People can register. Most important part of all of this is that there will be pizza and snacks provided. For the Arthur T. Cummings School Kindness Club, created and delivered bookmarks to the Winthrop Public Library this week, which was great. MCAS prep classes begin this week, starting Monday, today, and Thursdays. There'll be one-hour MCAS prep classes. Students have been identified and invited to attend these. Parents have been notified, and the focus of this session is ELA. Just a quick update of when MCAS testing is scheduled for at the Cummings School. ELA will be April 4th and April 6th. Math is May 2nd and May 4th. And STEM is May 9th and May 11th. So parents have notified via email of this in their weekly notices to parents, which are very consistent across the district, I'm happy to report. Winthrop Middle School, big deal, Thursday night, full-court frenzy, so basketball. So that's students and staff playing each other. Students are typically very well-behaved, staff, the word is out on that, it becomes very competitive, but they're excited to play. It's really a good bonding period for the kids with the staff. They also have their spelling bee on March 17th. And another note for Winthrop Middle School is March 17th, grades close. So parents are made aware of all of these through the weekly email as well. Winthrop High School, not far behind the middle school, and they, when you get bigger, you call it March Madness. And that's the basketball competition between the teachers and the students. Again, super competitive, but a lot of fun. That'll be this Friday at 2:30 in the gym. Our seniors, senior students have begun their scholarship application process and other preparations for end-of-the-year activities, which is just bizarre, to think that we're, we're closing in on end-of-the-year activities for our seniors. I've had the luxury of participating in quite a bit of the, the stuff that goes on with seniors towards, you know, getting ready for the end of the year and, and really focusing in on making sure that they, they end their school year in a very positive way as a, as a school family. And I see that happening, and it's nice to see. The Winthrop High School Drama Group performed Frankenstein at the METG State Drama Festival on Saturday, March 4th, and the show was selected to move forward to the semifinal round, which is amazing, on Saturday, the 18th. So look forward to seeing that. Several members of the cast receive awards, which I'll speak about towards the end of my report. And it's just great to see, I mean, the drama is just so consistent in what they do. But what's really neat to see is if you dig deep, it's not just about the performance itself. If you see what goes on behind the scenes with our tech students, who don't necessarily stand on the stage and get clapped for until the end, but without them, the production would not go on. So there were some nice awards for that particular group of our drama crew. Winthrop High School students have started to do their course selections for the upcoming school year, another mind blower at this point. And the Winthrop High School Wellness Team is actively planning Wellness Month in April, which will include many wellness activities integrated into the school day, very well thought out and planned by the high school students, but it incorporates the staff as well, which is really neat. Extracurricular activities, we talked about the drama production, and I want to let you know that the original, the play is an original adaptation that was written by our cast. So there were awards that were given out at the last session, as we're, before we moved on right now. All-Star Company Awards were received by Michael Kalanin for excellence in acting, Zoe Long, Chelsea Long, JoJo Simpson, and Haley Brazil for excellence in acting, Nadia Aldweeb for excellence in lighting design, Stitch Mullein for excellence in sound design, Luke Durant, Ariana Capuccio, and Lily Giordano for excellence in projection design. And the semifinal round, as I spoke of, is going to be on March 18th at St. John's Prep, and Winthrop Public Schools will perform at 3:30. So we look forward to seeing that. Also want to congratulate the Winthrop High School Scholars of the Month, Jack Osborne and Lily Conway. Excellent job. Just a little update on athletics. Congratulations to all our winter athletes. So our winter season has come to a close. Our swimmers capped off another great year in our co-op with Lynn English, and three of our teams won the Northeast Conference, boys, boys and girls, hockey and girls' basketball. Our coaches and students were recognized across the league for their hard work. Just a note about swimming, some people don't know we have a co-op. We do. And my daughter was a product of the first, or maybe second year of the co-op. And it's an excellent, excellent program, where kids build lifelong relationships with kids from other communities that they may never interact with. So it's really a cool co-op to have. So just to highlight what I talked about, the Northeast Conference awards. So for boys' hockey, Coach Dale Dunbar received Coach of the Year. MVP was given to P.D. Silverman. And all-conference player Jack Hayes and Nico Baybine, All-Stars Billy Hayes, Colin O'Leary, and Philly Ball Cory. Girls' hockey, all-conference, some of these may be repetitive, but there were some new additions to them. So girls' hockey, all-conference, Emma Holmes and Julia Holmes, All-Stars Mia Norris, Talia Matucci, Abby Holmes, and Adriana Rosoto. In gymnastics, Isabella Rice received an all-conference nomination for bars. Indoor track, All-Stars, we had Ben Prue and Libby Carney. And in girls' basketball, all-conference, we had Maddie Stiglitz. And for our All-Stars, Reese Broden, Kaylee Farrell, and Grace Florielle. Boys' basketball, All-Star was Zach Bogus. So great job in the extracurriculars and athletics for our kids. We have our first mediation negotiation session on the 21st. I spoke about that last week. I will update you with information that I can as we get through there. And then one last thing, because everybody's talking about it, my phone's blowing up about the weather. So I'm going to read you, read you something from the 87,000 websites I watch all day long. Although confidence remains high for an overall significant impact to the region, specific details and change-overtimes of rain to snow, exact snowfall amounts, and strength of winds remain in flux, as does my decision-making process. So it is too close to call right now, and it is, it's an, it's an odd timing right, as of right now. So please understand that this decision is not something that I sit upstairs on the third floor of the town hall and make it a last minute. I'm involved with the police chief, the fire chief, the DPW director, other school districts, weather people, weather maps, to make these decisions. This one is going to be a tough one, because I'm just not sure yet. And even the National Weather Organization has said that things are still in flux. I will continue to talk to the people that I need to talk to and notify parents as early as possible. For those people who would like to believe it's still like it used to be, where we call it at 5:00 in the morning so everybody can get up and watch the little line across the bottom of the TV, we try not to do that, just because of the number of families that need to make arrangements for care for their students. We want to make sure if kids are home, that they're home safely, and the more notice we can give, the better. Sometimes that doesn't work out all so well, when the wind changes by two degrees and we go from snow to rain, like we did last time. I did, however, make 1,988 children happy on the last snow day, even though it was raining. And when I woke up on Tuesday, I said to myself, well, for some people, this might be a bad day, but for me, I'm winning. I have 1,800, 1,988 people who think I'm wonderful. Mad parents, I apologize for that. But I felt pretty good about myself on that day. We'll see what tomorrow and Wednesday brings, but this one's a tough one. And that's it for my superintendent report.
Great. Do you have any personnel updates, appointments, resignations? Oh, wait, sorry. Any homeschool applicants?
We have no homeschool applicants.
Okay. And then moving on to personnel appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, or leave of absences.
So we have one, one appointment, and that is filling a position at the Winthrop Middle School for an ESP. We have hired Ms. Sophie LaRae. She's been here with us now for a week. I checked in with her on Friday. She is loving the opportunity to work with our students and doing a great job. And that was all we had.
Great. All right. I think we can move on. Great, all right, um, I think we can move on to, uh, public relations.
So public relations, about eighty percent of what I just talked about in terms of, um, our students' accomplishments are part of our public relations. And the additional two that I left off were, uh, ch-ch-ch. One is about, uh, Winthrop High School Parent-Teacher Co- uh, Committee is raffling a St. Patrick's Day scratch ticket wreath worth two hundred dollars in scratch tickets. There's five dollars per chance, or five chances for twenty, and that drawing will be held on March seventeenth. It is on the high school website, but I'll let you know you can Venmo if you would like one, uh, a ticket or more. You can Venmo and the add, the, I don't know what you call it, because I'm not good at that, but the Venmo name is at WHS underscore PTC. All you have to do is put your name and the number of chances in a shamrock emoji. Did I miss any of, any else, anything else?
Elk Students of the Month.
Oh, sorry, Elk Students of the Month, that was supposed to be in my school-based, uh, report. So congratulations to the Elk's, uh, Students of the Month, which are Grade Six on the Jaguars, Molly Tidmore and Alan Rockefeller. Grade Seven for the Falcons, Lucy Boncorry. Grade Seven for the Wolves, Lucas Ray. Grade Eight for the Ravens, Patrick Omar Agomis. And Grade Eight for the Eagles, Charlie Ferrara. And I already talked about Jack Osborne and Lily Conway being Scholars of the Month at Winthrop High School. I believe, I believe that is all, for me.
Anyone have a PR note?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littori?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.